... United States of America. He is a product of which stands one nation under God, in the wisdom of liberty and justice for all.
Will you all agree that the extra town council, the ring date July 1st, we have a formal order? Will clerk please take the rule?
Dan Patterson.
Here.
Michael Saeve.
Here.
Diane.
Here.
Olivia Francisco.
Here.
Calvin Ellis.
Here.
Acknowledgements and announcements, I don't have any. Does anybody on the council have any?
That's okay.
Motion to approve the agenda order?
Some move.
A second, but I have a question about the agenda. Pam, I mean, you know, there was a, we don't, I don't see it on the agenda, this application. Did he withdraw it as a solicitor's app?
Yeah, it was.
Application for what?
Well, it's a solicitor's application for Trinity Solar. They want to go door to door, peddling their wares, but it's not on the agenda. So, I don't know if he withdrew it or it got missed. The name is Michael Norman. I don't know, I know him speaking, I do not know him, so I have no skin in his game. I just want to say that.
Are you sure?
Yes, I'm very sure, and I'm sure there are people who think so. I'm just asking.
No, I don't know anything about it.
Okay, because it says on business, no, it is, so I think it got.
I looked at it like three times.
Can I possibly say something? He's already going, he's already an SD, going door to door.
Yeah, I thought we did that.
Did it already?
What was the date on that?
The other guy was Windows, wasn't he?
Yeah, the other guys with, this is guys, so, Trinity Solar. I don't see what the date is, no, June 3rd. June 3rd, and I think it's, well, it's okay. Is, I just, I'm curious, is the gentleman here?
No.
No, okay.
He was there, he was there at my house on Friday.
About solar?
That's why I'm saying this, because I never.
Apparently, apparently, he's moved on without any discussion from us.
I don't hear gentlemen, will we discuss them then?
No, I understand, I just needed to ask, Nicholas, I didn't know if the gentleman might have been there.
Calvin, is there any way I can get that information in case I start getting calls? I didn't know anything about it either.
Because people did complain. Okay, so we had a.
I'm sorry, if you, if there was a motion, it was a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the agenda? Anybody need to take that on communications, Calvin?
Uh, yes, but there are several, as you know, that we're going to address as appointments. But in addition to that, please five, 12, 14, 15, and 16.
Okay, you have a ready?
Cal covered mine.
Diane?
Yes, and put 16.
I was gonna put five and 16 as well, so what else say?
No concern about whatever.
Everybody with a tier of the group with the minutes, correct? So, the motion to approve the agenda? So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, vacancies and appointments, first hopefully. Conservation Commission.
Uh, that's not true.
There's one last one.
We, we, remember we discussed a missing app or we couldn't find? And I, and then there was an email from David Di Francesco, and I, I found his original letter. I, I knew I'd read about this gentleman in the Standard Times, I don't know, a couple of years ago? And, well, for, for our consideration, I'm gonna move that David Di Francesco be appointed to the Conservation Commission.
How many do we have now? Second.
Thank you for that. I think we met six, maybe?
I think we're six.
But I, there, there's something about this that I just would like to share. He, he writes, I thought I remembered him being involved in something right over the line on Exeter Road. So, he, he says, "My role as funding director and administrator of a SO1C, five, oh, excuse me, 501(c)(3) in North Kingston informs my understanding of how to engage with local organizations such as the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service, state and county offices, USDA Rural Development, Xerces Society for Inverigre Conservation, URI, NDR Nature Conservancy." So, he, he just might be a valuable asset if the group ever gets left as well.
Need one more?
Well, we're getting there. And then, and if the charter amendment is approved, remember, we only need five, but right now we need seven. So, that's why, I just wanted to share that, because they found an interest. I did.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And I need a recusal form.
Under resignations, we have Jensen Tavaris, I believe that was on here last month.
Yeah. Well, we had the letter, but we got it too late, something like that.
We have another letter like that that's not on here, so.
I move that we accept the resignation.
Second, Pam?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, C, appointments, Exeter Rural Land Preservation Trust Committee members, two needed to serve four-year term. Begin date of appointment. Nothing, Patty?
No.
Continue to oppose. Juvenile hearing board alternate member to serve unexpired term pending November 6, 2026. Continue to oppose. Tax board review alternate member to serve unexpired term ending August 2, 2024. Public works worker, I know Rob has interviewed one person, and there was another neighbor here, but I, we have not heard back on anything yet, so. Continue to post that one. Animal control officer, nothing. Nothing on here, no, continue to post that one. Planning board member, we have three names, there was John Toro, Scott Malar, and the other one is Robert Correa.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Robert Correa as a member of the planning board.
Let's take a next discussion.
Uh, yeah, I, I would discuss it, and I happen to, I happen to know all these people, obviously, almost all. But I, I think this is a ser, significant position. You know, I, I think we ought to talk to these three people. I, I understand your motion, but I think we ought to, I'd like to interview the three candidates myself, just.
Well, the reason I chose him is he attended every CPAC meeting, and he was instrumental in helping get us finally.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, I do, so I understand.
And he attends most of the planning board meetings.
I understand, well.
I attend most of the planning board meetings. He is good, I don't, yeah.
And he's a smart guy, he asks questions and listens, and I just think it'd be perfect.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, um, part of my decision is based upon who I think would work best with Bill. I have had conversation with Bill, and I feel as though these gentlemen would work best with Bill. And I'm most, I'm very concerned with that, with that role, so that's my reasoning behind it.
Uh, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
To oppose?
Uh.
Okay. Next is planning board.
Wait, you're saying no?
Yes, please.
Yeah, yeah. You both saying no?
Next is planning board alternate member, Michael Byderis. He's an alternate right now.
I'm moving to reappoint.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is the only board review member, it's Warren Andrews, correct? Patty?
Laura.
Yeah.
Warren.
I'm moving to reappoint, he, he asked, he asked to be considered and reappointed, moving to reappoint into the zone.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Right? Number five in terms of money? Public carries?
No.
Uh, number eight is public comment. First is AC Davis.
This'll be fun. So, how about that debate? Nothing builds faith in government leaders and optimism for our country's future than watching obsolete fossils beat each other up over aimless trivia. Talk now of replacing Biden on a ticket, politics is a family affair. How about Hunter takes Joe's place? Same name, thank of print saving, reusing posters and bumper stickers. Good for the environment and evens out the contest. Felon against felon, a real spectacle. Three felonies for lying on federal firearms license apps, imagine that. Ethics says it's okay for Scott Malar to push the rural compound changes. He left some important things out of his request, so I don't think that's over, but one notable admit, he's already made application to sell development rights for his property. Sell, not donating. Think about that, if you understand how these work, take pause. Dev rates go to somebody, here probably TNC, and was a butter and receiver of the Stony Lane abandonment land. The council approved that with Cal's help, but without an actual planning board opinion as required by ordinance. Malar was supposed to recuse himself, said he would, there's no record, it happened. Development rights values are determined by appraisal, which sort the theoretical developed value, less the construction cost, less the remaining other use. Malar has an application filed, but not approved or signed, to sell his development rights. Maybe he can show otherwise, but I bet the appraisal isn't done, or he would have said so. While that's in process, he's working to double the amount of lots he could put on his property, which increases the theoretical developed value in changing the road specs, which lowers the construction cost. Development rights in town go for six to seven figures. Exeter is usually asked to contribute, that comes from taxpayers. So, leaning on this ordinance change could put significantly more money from taxpayers in his pocket. With an active application, this is more than conjecture. It stinks of conflict of interest, this will be the third ethics complaint, with some corrections to the things he told ethics. There's a swamp to be drained here, but it's not in the large yard. Speaking of swamps, you're gonna have a legal report later, that's good news. I hope you invite him to Sisto, he might have some things to say about recent depositions. We're in court again in two days, you should come. Here's the most recent filing we made, the day after the planning board worked to approve Jade's final plan change after building permits had issued. No road extension involved, no claims and no jurisdiction. On videos, as of last month, since November, they get zero hits on YouTube. That looks like the last posting of town is done online. I don't ask for stuff if it's available online, like meeting minutes and agendas, so if they do get posted, there's no need to file a request. Don't do it for me, do it for the people handling the upper request. Thank you.
Okay, next is Scott Malar.
Mr. President, members of the council, I'd like to set the record straight regarding some inaccurate information being circulated regarding Stony Lane. As you know, the town council wisely abandoned an unmaintained portion of Stony Lane approximately five years ago. This one-lane road was impassable for average vehicles and ran directly through a river and a swamp. Moreover, the area attracted large parties where massive bonfires were commonly left burning all night. This was creating a severe wildfire risk. The road was a huge town liability and clearly needed to be abandoned. It has been alleged that I advocated for the road to be abandoned so I could gain more frontage for my property. That is not true, and it's not even how this process works. A gate was installed by the town to block access to the abandoned portion of Stony Lane. This gate is past my property line, and any surplus land would go to the nature conservancy, who owns the land adjacent to my property. Abandoning a road does not extend property lines. I do not gain any extra frontage or land from abandoning Stony Lane. It should be made clear, however, that Stony Lane has been abandoned, starting at an existing gate, and has effectively blocked vehicle access for over five years. Kids with ATVs have tried to circumvent the gate, and the DPW wisely put it in a location where that is not possible. If Stony Lane is abandoned before this gate, then future access to the abandoned portion of Stony Lane, by the hunting club or others, would need to cross over private property. That would create legal access problems for the hunting club and potential liability issues for private landowners. This issue should be assessed before any final action is taken to where Stony Lane is officially abandoned. It has also been alleged that I have a conflict of interest for participating in revisions to the town's rural residential compound ordinance. That allegation is also not true. The Rhode Island Ethics Commission has determined that I don't have a conflict of interest and can fully participate in revisions to this ordinance. It should also be noted, I requested this advisory opinion before the allegation was made. As you know, I have served the town of Exeter in multiple capacities for approximately 38 years. Over that time, no one has ever questioned my integrity. I believe the town council knows why these allegations are currently being made. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next is new business, nine, A, town treasurer, requests for clarification regarding compensation for a canvassing members for training. I read your email about that this time, so.
Okay.
Do we need to send a policy, a vote?
I was going to say, maybe Ken can, or you, or both of you, figure out what other towns do in these cases, and. Okay, that can work.
It, it made perfect sense, because they do a lot of the online training.
They do.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just didn't want something else to come up, and then not know how to answer that.
Okay, yeah, all right. We'll have to leave that on there for next month, just in case, okay.
I just want to speak about it, only because Maria and I talked about it, she may have spoken with you as well. This is not an easy issue, and we are quite tight people, and I called upon to do more than just what they generally regularly do. And, as I said to Maria, my, my observation about this is that the people who are serving on the Board of Canvassers, because of how significant this has become, because of the questions about the, you know, the legitimacy of elections, there's no question here, but it won't be long before, I mean, someone already questioned it, who was serving there for a while, we know that, he's no longer serving. But that was unfortunate, but it certainly gives the public, no wrong idea. I think the people that sit here need more compensation, so they understand, this is significant. If they're only here for three hours, okay, that's probably all they need, but other things come up. And so, we can't fix that tonight, and I don't know what kind of policy you're gonna come up with, but, I mean, when other people, when they, for instance, yesterday, then it's a busy, it's a busy week. I don't mean yesterday, that's today, tomorrow, today, I think there were people here. They don't usually, they don't usually have to be, but they do this week, were there people here today? Any of them, yeah. Now, okay, I hope they don't request something more. I mean, it goes with the job. At the same time, I think they're to be paid more going forward, because this is a significant job that people are doing here for the town, monitoring, watching the election process. That's just my piece, I think what you said is fine, I think Maria and Ken will look at it, but I'm just giving you my thoughts. And I only do it because in my own profession for 33 years, there were times when I spent a lot of weekends doing work I had to do, even though I had that 7:30 to 2:15 job. I'm just saying that people have salaries, compensations, but sometimes more is required. And I bet they'll do it, but I also think they'll be recognized with more money. That's my two, that's my two cents.
Do we know how they compensation is to other towns?
No, I don't, and I think that's a good question. I mean, I don't know, we maybe would check that, and we probably.
We'll find out.
But, it's okay.
North Kingston has full-time people.
Yeah, well, I, I know, I'm not suggesting that, so let's not go away from the table here.
Sure, like Richmond, Mawster.
Right, it's okay.
So, I have no, no quarter campuses?
Protect?
Someone have no quarter campuses?
Well, I don't think that's not right.
The real question here is being paid for the training, right?
Yeah.
So, how do other towns handle that? That's the simple question.
It is, but there's training that's offsite and provenance, but there's also problem, so.
And that's what they'll look into.
Right, but there's probably also extra training, so.
And that's what they'll look into.
So, yeah. Okay. Sorry, thanks.
Okay. Item B is Department of Public Works, request to block the bid, trade-in, two, 2012, F550, not across the standards for the units. This was approved by the voters, have the town meeting. Um, I don't know if you want to add anything, though?
No, it pretty much speaks for itself.
Okay. So, we need a motion to launch it.
I'll say no.
Second. Discussion?
Yeah, so if, they need those, right?
Excuse me, counsel?
They need it.
Oh, they need approval to find out if the town needs it, yes.
Yeah, and good, it's fine.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, Department of Public Works, request to go up the bid, trade-in, 2022, roadside mower, for mini excavator with a flail head mower and multi-use options. This is something, Rob was at West Greenwich, this is a couple of issues. The previous director, respect this mower, number one, is too big for our roads, it does not fit. The second issue we had with this thing, from day one, it's been a headache with the mower head. There's been, last year, arguments.
Just doing it for the manufacturer back and forth?
Not only with the dealer, we met with the manufacturer rep that flew in from Wisconsin, telling us there was nothing wrong, and me, Rob, and one other gentleman pulled the bolts out of it and showed him what was wrong with it, but we didn't dare fix it because it was brand new. And then after that, they agreed it was built wrong. Yeah. Now, dealer will not return phone calls. So, this is an option we're looking at, it's not set in stone, he's gonna give some prices in that, you know. That's why he wanted this on there, Rob is, right now, he is on his way back from Missouri. So, that's why that's on there, I told him, get your information, do your homework, you know. It's not set in stone, if it comes in a number of more work, we're all over, so. We need a motion to go up the bid on that.
I'll make a motion to go out to bid, trade-in, the roadside mower for the mini excavator with the flail head mower, mower in multi-use options.
Second.
One other thing with discussion, Wes Grinch went to one of these units, I think last year, he's been up there and looked at that one and seen how it works, so. Because that's what brought this up when he saw that one, so.
Not to mention.
Fixed and, and. Well, right now, right now, the machine is running, but they're afraid to use it.
Yeah. And the machine that we have now, is only a three or four-month machine, and then it's parked. Where the excavator can be used pretty much year-round.
I brought him over to one of my jobs to see what machine we have, and they call it a quick hitch, mine has a couple of cupboards, I just slip the machine, push two buttons, and I can turn the pot. The, the machines are becoming multi-use, and obviously, with the cost, so. All right, uh, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is Exeter Historical Association, 250th Annual Risky Committee, request for funding. Come on up, Sheila.
Actually, Katrina's gonna do it.
Oh, okay.
Well, before, let me just say.
I was speaking to Sheila in the parking lot.
That's okay. But just let me say, I asked that this be placed on the agenda, because we had discussed it in a sort of subcommittee, and so they explained to you why they would like us to give them some seed money.
Can we tell them, Katrina? Sure.
So, that is what we've discussed at our meetings so far, we have quite a few ideas, and we're still planning. But we need to send out mailers to the town, so we will have surplus $2,500 to send out information, so we can be prepared for the fall festival. We want to have a wrap-up at the event, but we need people to know about us before we do that.
I was talking to Sheila in the parking lot, she said about $3,000.
A thousand would be better.
The issue is, number one, we don't know where we're gonna get the money, this is something that we're gonna have to look into. Just glancing at this real trick, I even had this thought, firework event.
Yeah, Chris said Wes Greenwich had mentioned doing a combination between the two towns.
About $50,000.
Well, they didn't ask for that.
Maybe they'll have firework just once.
For discussion, I'd like to make, I'd like to put a motion on the table, that we set up a discretionary fund for these people, for $2,500 from our contingency fund. So, this is a one-shot deal to have a, a celebration.
We're gonna make it count, because Sheila says, basically, it's the mailing, and a mailing's gonna be right around, to get every resident in town, is gonna be right around $3,000.
Well.
It's going out Friday, your post.
They have mailing, it's, oh, well, and $3,000 is fine. I mean, we had talked about two, and it went to 25, and tonight it went to three, but that's good. I mean, we have a contingency fund, or a discretionary, if you will. This is a discretion we can make, I think, because it's a one-shot deal, and they would like to make it something special. They'd like to, from what I, what we understand from talking with these folks, I'm not gonna be fired, but I just want them to have some seed money. It's a celebration, a 250th anniversary, so I think we should support them. That's why I made the motion, I guess there isn't a second, though.
I'll second it, yeah.
Oh.
Now, because I was, like I said, I grabbed her in the parking lot.
Yeah, but you started by saying.
Will you amend your motion to $3,000?
Of course, of course, it'll be $3,000, I amend my motion.
You're no exception.
He, he started with, I don't know where we'll get the money, so I assume.
I, I know that, I'm saying what you said, the discretion.
I thought you were opposed, but now you surprised me, and you're not, because you seconded my motion. So, that's why in all these years, Dan, I'm never quite sure.
Well, while we're discussing 250, and I think the last time Sheila was in here, we had discussion in the parking lot, I didn't want to do this for years, I wanna have a town council meeting in a whole town.
Yes, they're talking about that.
So, it's, the kids laughing, are the mushrooms still growing in there?
Maybe the snakes have left, because the mosses.
Right, right.
This will be.
It's on the, it's on the list.
There was a meeting at once.
Yes, there was.
There was, yeah.
Well, which was, which was why we.
There was, yeah, one of the, but the point is, they want to raise some money so they can make the building appropriate. We can't go there now, well, we can't, whoever is sitting here can't yet, but they'd like to make it work, so.
Are the mushrooms of that edible?
Sure.
There's no cows in the area.
It's water.
Hold up, it's water now.
I thought you were going to ask what kind of mushrooms they are, okay.
Stay away from that cow.
Yeah, well, I did, but I thought you were going to ask.
Uh, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Just to say good luck, committee, and try to get some good things rolling.
While, while we're on, we are also coming up under the second section, but she just gave you updates, so we might want to just not worry about it.
Oh, under unfinished business?
Yeah.
Because that's a standard.
Yeah.
This was, you know why I put this in on this way? Because it was a special request for funding, and I thought we ought to consider it.
Before we move on to the next thing, and I had this same question outside with Sheila, was the lady from the state came down, gave us a big sales pitch, and asked her were they giving any funding? Know anybody else that can?
Well, as far as they know, it's still, the state doesn't know what they're doing, right? Yeah. The state.
I mean, the state is paying for their portion of this, and they said each town should do their own thing. What does that mean?
And that the state, the state will take credit for all of it.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on to the next thing. Thank you, Sheila. Thank you, Katrina. Item E, Director of Social Services, report current programs.
Hi, Laura, thank you for having me.
Thank you. I, I suggested that because of all of what Jessica's been doing, said, would you mind coming to a council meeting and telling you all and everyone else there what you've been up to? So, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you for having me. Um, so I have been getting an increase in calls about food assistance lately. School is out, so kids are home. Um, so in Exeter, we do have a food pantry located at the Exeter Chapel, but it does not have refrigeration, or it cannot handle fresh food. So last week, we started our growers' give-back program. Um, I'm working with five farms in Exeter to provide a no-cost produce market for dairy and fresh vegetables. Um, we had thirty-four households attend on Friday, we delivered to ten homebound residents, and that represented seventy-five individuals in Exeter, so it was pretty successful. We had about twelve volunteers there. I'm really happy to support our local farms as well. Um, Narragansett Gun Club and the Exeter Community Food Bank help support, fund that program as well, just to let you know. Oh, and I've been getting lots of egg donations from different individuals, so that's eggs.
Eggs.
That's good. Um, to also address food insecurity, I was able to distribute thirty-two farmers' market produce carts from the Rhode Island D E M for income qualifying seniors who will use at local farmers' markets across Rhode Island. Um, another ongoing program is the Exeter Extras Program. That is my handyman service for seniors. Since April two thousand twenty-two, he's been able to assist fourteen residents. Um, examples of services performed are insulating a front door, removing a broken microwave, replacing a walkhead staircase. Um, it's really nice because he forms a relationship with all of the residents that he helps, so it's more than just going over and, you know, putting insulation in a door, it's someone checking on these residents and forming a connection. Um, I included in my report a really nice impact statement from one of the residents that, you know, received some help from him. Um, I just have it available, if anyone wants to look at it. Um, in going with that, I also, I don't know if you guys have seen, that I've been working on creating an Exeter Village. Um, that is a network of volunteers helping seniors within Exeter. Um, it's part of a statewide program, I believe nine towns in Rhode Island already have villages established, um, and it's all over the country, and it's basically, it would really, it's basically expanding on things I've already been trying to do in Exeter, like Exeter Extras. So basically, any resident, um, that needs help, whether it be, you know, getting a food pantry delivery, or a walkway shoveled, or light handyman repair, would call the main number in Providence and be connected with a volunteer right here in Exeter. Um, so in order to become an official village, we need twenty volunteers and ten members. Residents can become members and volunteers. I have lots of information on this, I think we're up to ten volunteers, so I have a great steering committee of about ten people. Um, I had five of them stuffing envelopes for me today at someone's house, we're going to do a big mailing, try to let people know that it's available. I personally get a lot of calls, you know, can you drop off groceries? Can somebody give me a ride to a medical appointment?
And you're one person.
Yes, and I try to do the outreach to people who are, you know, who are willing to volunteer, but this would really like streamline it, they would do all the background checks for me, they, they would handle all the calls, so. I was at a meeting a few months ago, and I heard, um, the director of this agency speak, and a light bulb kind of went off in my head that I thought this would be a really great fit for Exeter, so this is also something I've been trying to get going.
That's what they officially village common?
Yeah, village common.
Village common.
Yep, um, and I can send you, again, I have these, if anybody is interested in learning more, um, what else have they got going on?
Okay, just while you're looking, see, I know, you may remember, Jessica invited people to come to a meeting at the library about this program, because you went, you heard, you brought it, and that's how she's trying to pass things on. I mean, we honestly haven't had someone do this before, maybe there weren't a lot of opportunities like there are now, but, you know, I think we all appreciate it, maybe because I'm getting older, and I think, I don't need it right now, but, but I think that folks that do really should appreciate the work that Jessica's doing.
Thank you, yeah, I know, all, you know, all seniors in Exeter are aging in their own homes, and that presents different challenges for people, um, so I think it's a great solution. I know in other towns like Barrington, their like high school football team does all the snow shoveling, so I really like, I really can envision our community really becoming connected, and just a few meetings that we've had so far, and also if you can, um, it provides social opportunities for people, which I think is really needed here. So different villages have book groups, they're walking groups, and our little ten-person steering committee meeting is already starting to connect and form those relationships, which I think is really cool. You know, they've been over each other's houses so far, they've met people they never would have met, so, um, I really hope to get it going, I hope that it will help me spread the word. Um, take a look at their, their webpage, because they do a lot, and it would be nice to have your support to do what I want to do here in Exeter for seniors. Um, what else? Um, I was able to give a scholarship to an E W G student for college last month, so that felt really good. Um, what else? We have, I've been working with the transition students at Exeter, Wes Greenwich High School, um, and the Human Service Department of Richmond to offer activities at the Arcadia Y M C I on Wednesday mornings, um, that's been a nice collaboration. Um, as you guys know, um, I'm going to be working on the Exeter Work Education and Health Center in the new building across the street. Maria and I have already been working on our first grant report, and have already performed outreach to the community at the growers' give-back to get their feedback on what programs they would want to see, so I have started all of that. Any questions or any other?
I just want to say thank you before he starts his big thing.
Well, what my big thing was, that you mentioned the new building, and for anyone who wasn't present when we held a special meeting, there was a, you know, there was a conversation we had, and Jeff said, I will help, I will try to make it work, and we have since then, in addition to the five hundred thousand that are going to somehow support, we've been told, oh, look at the smile, what have we been told, Maria?
Additional three hundred thousand to make it a total of eight hundred thousand.
Woo, woo-hoo.
Feedback's been really positive.
I beg your pardon?
Feedback from the community has been really positive, yeah, so.
Well, I, I just, when you mentioned it, I said, we just got to tell people what you're doing, so.
And you can always, anyone can always email me, or I have a Facebook page if you want to follow it and see the programs I'm running, or feel free to reach out to me and anybody.
What's the Facebook page?
Exeter Department of Social Services.
Okay.
And so everyone that I have participating in the program writes on these, I just pulled one to include in the report.
Jess, thank you for coming by and talking to us.
Thank you, thank you.
Next on the new business is Charlie's old-time trash status and places.
It's not yours.
Look, I got, I got a call, I have a concern. Charlie's old-time trash is not, is, is collecting recycles or recyclables and putting them with their trash, and I know that because I saw it happen at the end of my driveway, and then they happened to be outside, and they backed the truck in, and I said to the nice young man, wait a minute, you just took my recycle and then you came to get my trash. I had a call from someone on the west end of town who called me and said, uh, I have this service and they're not doing recycling, and I was hoping, you know, that Rob would be here so I could look at Rob and say, Rob, this is important, and that that we get, we know to get recycling. Well, I am, I'm not ignoring Bill, but I was just commenting to you, I was commenting to you about why it's on the agenda, and now Bill will probably tell us it's really important to separate and get credit for recycled materials, right? I know Rob has told us this.
Yes.
So I, I spoke to the young man, very pleasant fellow, I said, why, what's happening? Well, a truck is, is broken. That was either two or three months ago, and I don't know whether anyone else has this service, but I know you said you gave it up.
I had it for one week, it got rid of.
Okay, so, and my question is, I, I said status because I think we should write, I think we should call them, I don't know what the process is, but we should talk to them about, if they're not going to recycle the way they should, then I think the license should be revoked, but I don't know what to do other than, my thought was to call them in at the next meeting and ask them to speak about the license and why, are they getting a truck? I mean, I, I know why you got rich, I know why you did.
Well, we, they've been bought out by somebody in Connecticut that want a bunch of companies, everybody's complaining, in all the towns, so.
And I think last time with Dee Lewis, we sent a letter.
We shot him off. They're not, they're not using, no, they don't, they're not using that, the, the article that we get, and let them do the cetera, yeah.
Well, my thought, I'll make a motion, and if there's a second, if that's inappropriate, then vote no. My, I will move that we request in writing, by letter, that they present themselves to us at the next council meeting because of our concerns about their recycling process, which apparently they don't have.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion before we, yeah? Next, uh, item J, Juvenile Hearing Board Dedicated Mailbag. Did you put that on Patty or do you want?
I don't know, I don't know any of that, that one.
Nobody knows.
I don't know any of that.
Okay, well, I happen to be here, I have a meeting. You want to take it away?
No, all I know, I don't know all the dirty details, all I know is they need an email, the juvenile hearing board needs a dedicated email that does not save.
That's right.
All the information on the town servers, and, because it needs to be cleared out in private. So do we direct James to do that for them?
That would be James' department.
Because the gentleman was, happened to be sitting here, must have been before the special, oh, it was the night we were meeting, but they already had scheduled a meeting, they end up meeting in the, the break room, I believe, and I didn't know who he was, it was nice to me that they heard the chair, and he talked about the need for this, and he must have come in at the St. John.
Yes.
And so we need to, what?
Direct James.
James to set this up. I don't know how, but.
I know the records is supposed to be sealed in that whole juvenile hearing board.
Yeah, no one's supposed to have access.
Yeah, you can't throw them away, you have to keep the record, but it's sealed.
Well, there's, I just saw.
It used to be Richard kept them, didn't he, Scout? When it was started?
He, he kept them locked up.
Yeah, yeah.
I think he turned everything over to Bill Donovan, then I guess from Bill Donovan I went to.
And when they were actual, physical records.
They're sealed, yeah.
It's easier to do that, but they need an email address that's just theirs.
There's a, there's something under here, there's something tonight you're going to see, why from Mr. Baker, you didn't say it, no, I think, I can't even.
Okay.
Just look for it.
We need a motion to direct him to look into this and see if he can rectify the problem?
I sent it to Goodwood.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number ten, unfinished business, A, status, update the town Exeter code of ordinances, chapter fourteen, buildings and building regulations, article nine, impact fees. Do you want to add together?
Well, yeah, I met with, um, Maria and Rob before the last meeting, and we had a series of questions, to send them back, um, talking about what can be rectified with the commercials, and now it's in.
Okay.
Then I'll go, send it to you after Ben's response and play with the planers for the commercial, and maybe update the ordinance.
Okay. Let's move on. Uh, Director of Public Works request for guidance, incident at five Reshore Road. I talked to Rob on this, he's finishing up the chip ceiling, what, you got another week or so?
One minute. The, the chip ceiling, I don't think starts till August, we're doing, uh.
When do you get the roads done and then do this one?
C R F, C R F starts next week.
Yeah. Okay, so we can leave that one on there, it's just a matter of time, he was allowing them to dig up their flowers before he ripped the rocks out, so.
Yeah, we talked to, we talked to the resident, he wasn't happy.
He wasn't happy, but he was cooperating, he's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, item C, proposed potential charter event, this November two thousand twenty-four election.
All right, um, I sent out the four drafts, uh, so, what you see in there is this draft, and what we have to focus on are just the questions themselves, the other, the amendment from second, and then that rationale, just to promote it, so, I think they're pretty clear, um, whether the county administrator or the county manager, um, but, I don't know who you want to talk about first.
We talked about the other three, haven't we already?
Yeah.
We, we, we've said about those, I think it's the issue that Mike thought of last month, about whether or not we reach out to the public again and say, you should have a town, something, manager or administrator, and I, I noticed that Ken has provided us with what we asked in the last, at least once, if not twice, for an administrator is, is, is Wes Greenwich.
It's a good, it's a better worthy manager, as you explained to me, I knew that.
Why, I talked to you about this? I'm kidding, I know, Mike, we have talked, and I'm appreciative, I'm appreciative of that, and I just want you to know that. And I noted that you're not going to be on the ballot. Yes, we talked about it, and my thought is it should be an administrator, because it will administer what it is that we direct the person to do, manage, and Kevin and I have spoken at length about this as well, the no. Manage, and Kevin and I have spoken at length about this as well, the nomenclature. I like what we have. I like what Ken's.
I talked about the last election. I didn't print it off. I was reading it online though.
It's expanded from the last time.
The rationale, you mean?
Long of the section, town administrators. There's certain ways you can do it, you know? I'm sure there's going to be areas within the town that's going to have to be amended once you get the administrator position in place. But also the, by ordinance, a lot of places have ordinances to set them, to do these responsibilities before.
Yeah.
Everyone who's listening here should remember or realize if it, if it, we add a tool to the toolbox, we don't use the tool till voters approve it, till it's budgeted. It might be a while.
But it gives you the option.
But there is there if it comes to a point and then we can't, then someone, someone.
Yeah, me.
Yeah, I know that. And I'm, I'm saying that I, sorry about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
It's a pleasure.
Right, we digress. Sorry. Well, I move that these four trier amendments be the ones that we place on the ballot.
Second.
November. Can I just ask, there, there might be some grammatical things that I, suggestions that I have. Nothing, no changes of any nomenclature.
What you have, you're just voting on movement as a public hearing.
Right, we, we need to send one.
Somebody talk to Ken.
Right, and there's plenty of times, yeah.
I, I noted that there was a public hearing, I think in September, uh, the last time we did this and that.
Lynn said they moved the dates a little bit.
Well, the questions have to be submitted, but we have to explain publicly in a hearing that these are the questions on the ballot and these are why they're there. This is why they're there. So.
I thought the hearing had to be before it went to the vote.
I, I don't think you're right, Pat, because if we, if we say this is what we want and we hold a hearing. Now, I know what you're saying because in the hearing, we might change those because of what we hear. It's possible, I, I'm pretty sure I read somewhere in my notes that there was a public hearing in September before. But we can do it in August.
It probably wasn't September before, but that's when it went to the ballot in September before. Now it's to August.
So what about the second Monday of August? Except it's that holiday.
August 7th is the deadline to submit local questions.
Oh, well, then we can't do it.
So we also have to talk about, um, the awarding of the bid for the roof. I hope that tonight we can do it.
No, it was supposed to be on the August of January.
If there's something in July, we can do a quick.
Yeah, do it in July. I don't want to, but we gotta do it.
We can work it in, make August quicker. Fifteen twenty-two Friday night or all Monday nights. You gotta have it by August, he said. August, um, seven, you said? It's August 7th. If the meeting's on the 6th, I mean, it has to be prepared and ready, signed. The resolution has to be.
Why were you there in July?
Are we talking about public hearing?
Public hearing for these four, these four trier amendments.
Well, it needs to be at least three weeks away from today, right?
Post it. Lynn posted, so you need three weeks from today. So that would be.
One, two, three, 22nd?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-second, two, that's. You give your time to post it or you gotta do the 29th?
No, 22nd should work.
Well, we could always do the 29th.
29th would be safe.
Three, three weeks from today would be the 22nd. But four weeks would be what? Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nines.
And that is a.
Then we got a week and a half to get all that together.
That last Monday of them.
We'll have, we'll have less than a week and a half. It should be, you know, whenever you have to do a public hearing and you approve it, the documentation should be ready. There's a resolution that has to go down with it, your vote and then the questions. You have to put the questions in order that you want them on the ballot. So that's something you could probably vote on now or the public hearing.
Vote to move it to a public hearing. Vote to move it to a public hearing.
Vote to move to public hearing.
Yeah, I thought that we hold a public hearing on these four trier amendments on Monday, July 29th.
Was that a motion?
It was. I thought I made it. I mean, it didn't say it, but.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Ken.
Okay, next one. Item D, status. RI 250 Commission, Excellent Store Preservation Commission. We've got your.
That's right.
Good, okay. Item D, uh, item E, Department of Public Works, property damage, male road. Item.
Still waiting for the police report.
Okay. All right, we'll leave it on there. Item F, status.
Still not be the police report. What am I supposed to?
We had, directed Lynn to see if she could get the police report a month ago.
They got the police report, but they're looking for, I believe, their statements that took place.
I, I got ahold of the state police. They faxed it to me right here. I gave it back to, I think I gave it to you, Pat.
Yeah.
And then they requested, I guess Rob asked me, he says the statements didn't come with it. I got a call up there and I'd just been getting a runaround. I don't know if they saved them. Maybe they didn't save the statements and they didn't put it.
So we have the police report. He wants the statements that took place that, that day, but.
And I can't get a definite answer on where the statement went.
Was, was Lynn instrumental in helping that along? If she was, maybe she can.
Go get it. Go get it though.
I did.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have a tough time getting.
I'll put, I'll go, I'll make another request to see if I can get the, uh, the statements from that report.
All right, we'll leave that on there. Item F, status. Welcome signing, getting out of town.
Yeah, I just gotta get Rob to get me, um, to go through the specs on the breakaway signs. All right, the drill holes and.
Okay. Next up, you're easy. I, I've already solved your problem. Department Emergency Management Request to Utilize Bidnet.com for Posting a Request for Proposes and Invitation to Bid. I went on Bidnet.
Yes.
The low-end subscription's free. The more you want, the more you pay. And Bidnet is a search engine that goes through all these postings of bids.
Yes.
Go on to the State Rhode Island Purchasing, go to the municipal page. Bidnet, they had the bids for the roof, the floor, they took them off the municipal page where Lynn has an account. So if we just use that municipal page on the state purchasing page, Bidnet's gonna pick them right up and put them on. You don't even have to drill them.
So is that a yate?
You don't need to post it on Bidnet. If you take it, Lynn has an account and passwords.
Okay.
Rhode Island Division of Purchasing, they have the state bid page and then they got a page set for municipalities. She posted the, like, the roof in the basement on there. Whoever runs Bidnet, they go, they go through these pages. They had it posted on Bidnet. Just they, and they, they sit there, a basic subscription, zero, then we start looking, well, then it's 36 a month and then it's 75 a month to get even more information. And ever since I signed up, I'm getting emails every day from them, so.
Just, just, if I could just add, just be sure that you work with Lynn because she's the purchasing agent. So she's the one who has to fish.
Yeah, she's got the, the password and that to get onto that, to get to state purchasing.
There was some discussion last month about once it's on there, the updates might not be made on there. Is that, is that?
You can do it, you can do it on the state page, say you're gonna change the bid date or you have to issue an addendum. You can't go change, usually it's addendums, you know, like if you do a pre-bid meeting, people will ask questions and you get the answers for them. You could, they never die in the middle of the one.
And that's.
Don't worry about that.
And what I did.
Well, Ken did a lot of research to.
Jim. It's a porn.
So I, I contacted North Kingston because they use Bidnet. They have language in their RFP town, in their postings, kind of directing people to, um, you know, this, this is responsibility to, to know that, you know, if you don't receive a addendum or whatever, um, it's their responsibility. But it will, will go through the, the town website and state around and Bidnet.
Yeah.
So, but it's on their RFPs, so I think we should pick the language.
Yes.
Put that on there. It's on the postings, the language. Um, there's no legal, yeah. So, and then there's no, um, I don't know lawsuits or anything, um, mechanics on websites. So it's, not just theirs, but everybody's face on the bids.
It's used all over the country. It's just.
Yeah, so it's, it's, you punch in the information, your area, what your specialties are and they send you the bids for that type of work.
It was key. For the multi-hazard mitigation plan, it's already specialized, skill set. So we got very qualified people, very qualified. It was, it was a, yeah, it was a really perfect experience. So I, I highly recommend it.
And, and we only have to, we may, the law, the law, um, general law in the town, you know, what it says that, um, impersonation requests may, um, publish your, you don't have to, it's always a requirement. But it has to, I think it has to stop with the town.
Absolutely.
Definitely. Do we need some kind of motion or something so that we can add that language that you mentioned? They're responsible to get the updates. If you make a motion. North Kingston, is that? No, because who's gonna remember?
I have your mind up here.
Um, I think, I think we should start working on, um, a purchasing ordinance that, um, the process SOP of language needs to be put into the RFPs, maybe templates. We utilize, every department utilizes something different. RFPs are involved, sometimes they're not involved, so, so there we can work on. We should, we talked about that months ago.
Good idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Item H, status. Building uses and improvement plans, six seven five ten rods road. That was what, last Thursday or Friday we received the bids? We didn't put them on there. She's going through, I'm going through because they're all over the place.
So no pitch for the basement though?
There was only one for the basement.
There were none for the basement.
There was none? She said she, I said, oh, she got one.
No, there were none for the basement. There was six for the.
For the roof, yeah.
Is it still, no, I was gonna say, is it still active, the, the, you know, have it after bidding? You can't go back up to bid if you choose to. There was one guy here who said, I thought my company was gonna bid on it and he didn't. He said if it goes up to bid, back up to bid, I'm gonna bid on it. So, but that's up to you guys.
Yeah, we can't do that tonight because it's not on the agenda.
Wait.
We want to put it on next month's agenda. Uh, okay. But we plan on, a week, a week wasn't enough time to go.
No, it's a lot.
The amount of work up there, so.
Yeah, and they really varied.
Yeah. And then one was, one is completely taken for a regular trash, is how bad it was. Cheap? Very cheap.
It's a little scary, yeah.
The next is seven forty-two ten rod road. We're still waiting for the tenant to get out of there. Once he gets out of there, we'll get a meeting and get in there with Public Works.
We'll have a couple groups in there ready.
Well, where he's moving to, they paved it the other day, so.
And then the, the campuses should be in for a meeting next week. Not, they want to be, this is the next week. This week's not.
Is it the night next week?
That is the, um.
Yeah, the community center.
You sent the people from the state. I'll be there for nine.
That's the one with the people with the funding.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll try and make that one. That's it for each. I'll try and get.
We'll be there, they're coming here at 1:30, right?
And then you're gonna be at the site at like 2:33?
Yeah.
I'll try and get there at 2:30.
And then we just had the Department of Health in yesterday, Friday, um, Bob opened up. They were testing for the federal chemicals in all the public wells, so we accommodated that. So these will accommodate.
They're testing every public well in the state.
Who, who, that's?
Department of Health.
Every single public well in the state is being tested.
PFA's or whatever it's from.
We never heard that. Can't talk about that yet. I asked Lynn if she knew anything from that and she said nothing.
Okay, so. Keep it posted. Keep that on you together. I focus the communications. Uh, Cal, you're number five.
Yeah, I could imagine you all read this and you probably did have some concerns.
Oh, I had some phone calls on this.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay, well, I, I know nothing except that it seems.
This individual does not live in Exeter. I guess he's had an ongoing battle with the owner of Slade's Exeter Auto for numerous years, from what I've been told. And where he's allegedly using, it's not town property, it's state property. And I got an email first and I made a couple of phone calls.
Okay.
Yeah. The individual lives somewhere in the valley.
So, so he finds Ken, so he might, may have had a client at one point or something.
But does this man know that it's state property or should the town write him a letter?
His issue was, he's complaining to Hal that it's his, and Hal's telling him it's not his only issue.
So Hal has then.
And then the guy got really belligerent on the phone with Hal and Hal said, I don't qualify.
Yeah, I don't think they do it. So was that your resident?
Yeah. But it's, it's basically the whole story.
No, as long as, as long as it's been pursued and, and Hal already knew and Hal's already done, that's fine. I just didn't know.
Then you have number 12.
I do, I did. And number 12 is the Communicational Department, Issa Davis. And you have a copy of that and, uh, you know, when I looked at it, I'd also spoken to Bill about, um, some ongoings, whatever, I have at a planning wood workshop, believing, not sure which. And so I, I, if you recall, I put it on the agenda last month. Kayla Ritchie and Stony, Stony Lane. Because Carrie had spoken to me, I didn't, I didn't ask her a lot at the time. She just said, you know, it was an issue and it ought to be addressed. So she's written here regarding this. I spoke to Carrie good. I'd like to read to you because if you recall, um, and, and many semates and reference to this. So I'd like to just read what Carrie has written because it came under, under public comment. I'd like you to hear it. Please note that as tax assessor, I often guide and assist attorneys, land surveyors, title examiners and property owners with deed slash parcel data research. On Monday, April 22nd this year, I assisted Mr. Anthony Sinersha, a real estate attorney of Sinersha and Sinersha PC. Mr. Sinersha inquired who held the title of ownership for parcels of land in the area of Sunderland Road, Stony Lane. Mr. Sinersha also inquired, did the town actually convey or grant the abandoned road to the nature conservancy? I informed Mr. Sinersha that per the town council minutes, Mr. Louis Beck and the nature conservancy own the portion being abandoned. Mr. Sinersha mentioned an incident or injury that happened in the area and that was the cause, voice questions. And, and the reason that Carrie knows about this is because when the attorney inquired, she researched minutes of council meetings regarding the abandonment of the road. So upon reviewing the hard copy of the town's official street map dated March 5th, 2019, I was aware that it was necessary to revise the map to incorporate the changes made by the town council. Mr. Ellis was present in the council chamber shortly after my exchange with Mr. Sinersha. I mentioned to Mr. Ellis the need to update the official street map and my concerns with GIS. Mr. Ellis mentioned that he believed the town's acceptance of Kayla Ritchie Way was also overlooked and he stated that he would add this matter to new business for the next town council meeting to bring. and he stated that he would add this matter to new business for the next town council meeting to bring the map current. On Thursday, May, May 9th, 2024, I informed Council President Patterson that the need to update the map would surface. I also emailed town clerk, Lan and Deputy Clerk Pat, with a copy of the minutes from the meeting of June 2019, where the council abandoned a portion of Stony Lane along with February 27th, 2023, vote to accept Kayla Ritchie Way to town road. Lynn mentioned that it was on her ever-growing to-do list. So Carrie sent that because I called and said, Carrie, didn't you tell me that there was a problem with an accident or something? Because it was a very quick conversation, it made me think of Kayla Ritchie, because we remember that we let through Kayla Ritchie. So, you know, that, I just wanted you to understand that that's why I put it on last month's agenda. And I guess my only question related to this is, does it, it goes through the clerk's office, I guess, that? Maybe you put it out to bid or do you have someone that usually does the revision? Or how does it usually happen? I'm just curious.
Dan Carr used to do all the revisions on the map, so he has the.
He has the template or whatever.
He does, I'm thinking we should probably go back through.
Through him?
Yeah.
So, but it goes through your office, not planning, right?
Yeah, usually, not who?
Not planning, right?
No, usually the Public Works.
Okay, sits with.
Meets with Lynn and someone and we see what needs to be updated.
Well, it certainly didn't need to open any can or, but it sounded almost.
It takes time to update that map sometimes.
What place?
It takes time because there's changes here and there with the roadmap.
Well, anyway, I, I just wanted, in case you had read this communication, I just wanted to share something, you know, from Carrie.
Okay, here's number fourteen, too.
Well, you know, just, I'm sure that people have looked at this, this is about trees that were damaged on West Shore Drive, what they claim they were for some COVID work. You folks, you know about this or the complaint or?
I don't personally.
Did you, do you know Dan, anything?
I don't know, all I have, I've just seen him, so.
So we'll just, we'll forward this to.
Forward it to public works.
To Rob and ask him to, to just investigate and, anyway. I didn't, I didn't know, but I thought it, thought I'd go through the fact that we referred it.
We had number fifteen.
Well, okay, just, look, I don't know what to do with this, probably nothing. He wants to know if we could provide some compost bins, but we can't, but maybe we could sell them to him, I don't know. Anybody know?
They can go and do that.
Should we, should we refer this to the Conservation Commission when they get established?
I know Rob has talked about making a compost pile at the transportation button, yeah.
He references the city of Boston and what they do, well, so we're a little bit far, far removed from the city of Boston, so I just pulled it because I found it fascinating. And Lynn, number sixteen, I don't know, but you think it went to you? You probably all wanted this, we wanted that. It seems to me like Mr., Rob, I can't have a big talk, can't, I know. What is I tilted by in a gentleman's name?
Matt Richardson?
Matt Richardson, who began with an R, I'm Matt, I'm Matt. Glad you've been doing this research, and it looks like he's been very busy. So I just wanted to mention this and think that we might pass it to the planning board and ask them to move forward, consider, it looks like you've already been talking to planning, so I think we should endorse the concept, send it to planning and ask for them to, to process and create and provide an amendment.
That a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Aye.
I got a question, have you started with the Department of Health yet?
Um, yes, so.
Just because that's even worse.
Worse, so we do have a public well.
Not the public well, this was probably eight or 10 years ago, the gentleman I knew bought the carriage in and cut it, get rid of it.
Yeah.
And they're calling the Department of Health, well, we don't have any help to send you, but we have a list of consultants you can hire. It turned out they were all retired. But he said, cut it with all the things on that project, we're dealing with that.
Oh, really? Right, right. It's weird, so we have to deal with the Department of Business Regulation a lot for our brewery license, and so that was the first person I reached out to.
You're first.
No, believe it or not, they, he, there's a guy, John, who's the inspector, who we've dealt with before and he's sort of, you know, he came to us the first time when we got our license 10 years ago now. And he's like, I don't do many breweries, I usually do like automatic, you know, mechanic shops and stuff like that. But now there's so many breweries, he's actually doing mostly breweries.
You end up with like two or three bureaucracies.
I know, it's a, they.
Believe me, I deal with it all the time, so.
He's, he's been really good and they're actually, the state, the DVR anyway, is trying to make, they're trying to push for all breweries to have to serve food, it's just sort of good practice to.
Makes sense.
It just makes sense, and so.
People shouldn't be at that.
It just helps us with, you know, we have our tips training every year and the thing they always tell us, they tell you what food to serve to help with alcohol and so on, people have too much, so. The state's trying to make it so that you kind of have to have their requirement, and so they're trying to kind of spearhead this and they are working with the Department of Health.
Don't they have a new category called brew pub or something like that?
Yeah, so we're considered a brewery, which we're not allowed to serve food. A brew pub is the same exact license, but we're allowed to serve food. They're trying to get rid of the brewery license and make everyone be under a brew pub, which says you can make beer, but you also serve food or have to have food available. So we're just trying to kind of spearhead that and we, we have food trucks almost every time we're open. Most of the time they're great, but not all the time and it's, it's a lot of scheduling, it's a lot of work and we kind of see it as an opportunity to really control the narrative and to, to highlight what we grow and also what Exeter grows, we work with a lot of growers in the town and to kind of really have a cool, more of a community spot in terms of food, to not just have some random food truck from comments here. Have, this is, and highly on the menu, this is from, you know, Wild Harmony, this is from M Acres, this is where we came from. So it's dual purpose really, is what we're trying to do, so.
Good luck. I think this end up be the easiest part.
Yeah, and I did, I did reach out to Hal two years ago almost now and basically the way the ordinance is written now, we'd be considered a tavern, which I don't disagree with his, you know, his decision on that, it just, it would be a tavern, which is not allowed in our zone, so it's kind of like, how can we not try to get around? And he always said, you're trying to get around me, I said, I'm not trying to get around you, we just start figuring how we can do it together, you know? Which is why we're here.
Well, they're sitting there going through all the zoning, the zoning tables too this time, so that's, that's being done at the same time.
Yeah.
So we had to create it.
That's what we figured, it's just kind of update, that's what, I did go to the planning board just for a work session and they said, there's so many blank spots in the zoning table, there's not a Y, an N, or an S, there's blank spots. And I guess they're trying to update that, so that's an opportunity to do that, too.
So you don't plan on making fun of this year probably for next year?
We're just trying to get the ball rolling, you know, I think we met with the planning board maybe three months ago to start a conversation and that's when they finally told me, maybe last month, well, you need to go to the town council first. I said, I would have done the first of that, but we're just trying to get the ball rolling.
Should, you're gonna do this in a pavilion, right?
Yeah, so separate than, so not in our building, our building we have now, we didn't really have the foresight to make a kitchen, so we're thinking about doing like sort of an outdoor pavilion next to it, so we can just have the food out there and have the Department of Health can say, tell us what we need in this space right here to make food and, and we'll do it, essentially.
You could start getting approvals for your pavilion.
Yeah, right now, oh, that's true, yeah.
Instead of waiting until this all happens, you're further behind.
Yeah, that's a good point, that's a good point. So, yeah.
No, you should, I don't know if you have a posting, but you should post that says, keep drinking and makes other people more interested.
Thank you.
Oh. So what other foods? I know cheese and orange.
The best ones, not, not directly good things, fried, fried.
I got an email, James wanted to go.
It is good.